Good evening and welcome. I call the City Council meeting for Wednesday, April 24th, 2024 to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence to think about whatever it is you'd like to think Thank you. If you'd all please rise and join Alderwoman Lynch in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll for tonight.
Ardone?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Reinards?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
T. Dunn?
Here.
Jobjan?
Here.
And Burkholder?
Here.
Ten President, Your Honor?
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening and welcome, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. For anybody in here, especially if you'd be kind enough to put your phone on silent or turn it off, simply it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you'd like to address the council, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. Wait for the mayor of the chair to address you. Please talk to the council as a body or the staff as a body and not to any one individual. You'll have three minutes at the end, and any particular discussion item, you'll have five minutes. We ask that everybody please use the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you. Will an alderman please move approval of the City Council's special meeting minutes for March 27?
So moved.
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Before I ask for approval of the City Council meeting minutes for April 10th, my understanding there's a correction that needs to be made to the meetings, so I'll ask Deputy Clerk Mr. Krupp to explain. Mr. Krupp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The April 10th council meeting minutes currently state that Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman McGinnis moved and seconded to delete discussion agenda item number four. I reviewed my notes and then watched the video, and Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman McGinnis moved and seconded the initial resolution, and Alderman Kelly and Alderwoman Burkholder actually moved to delete the item. So the minutes need to be corrected to accurately reflect that. I provided all of you a copy of how the minutes look now and how they will look when they're corrected. So thank you to Alderman Kelly for bringing that to my attention, and thank you all for the opportunity to explain. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Krupp. Is there a motion to correct the City Council minute meetings for April 10th, 2024?
So moved.
Motion second to correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. They're corrected. Will an alderman please move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for April 10th, 24, as corrected? We did that. Is there a city administrator update, Ms. Merritt?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, tonight's administrator update will be provided by Parks and Recreation Director Dyson, who will provide you with an update on summer pool operations.
And before you do that, Ms. Merritt, I apologize. We did not actually move the correction, but we didn't move the motion. So will not move approval of the City Council minutes for April 10th.
So moved.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good with the correction. Now, Mr. Dyson. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Chad Dyson, Parks and Recreation Director. I have the honor tonight to actually update you on our pool staffing for this year. As you're aware, the past several years heading out of the pandemic, we have struggled to acquire enough lifeguards and staff to operate the pools in full capacity. I'm happy to report at this time, we will be operating at pre-pandemic levels. We've successfully hired 65 lifeguards over a total of 81 aquatic staff in total for both Annie Witt and Fedgeberry Pools. So they will open June 2nd and operate at pre-pandemic levels seven days a week. So I also want to take a moment to recognize our HR department. They were very instrumental in helping us recruit and get to our staffing levels that we need. So want to give them a quick shout out as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Great news. Okay. Will an alderman move approval, the report of the committee of the whole, for April 17?
So moved.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have two appointments, three proclamations. Two appointments, I'll read both, then ask for a motion to approve. Riverfront Improvement Commission, Gwendolyn Lee, is a reappointment, and Design Review Board, Jessica Malacheck, is a new appointment. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you for your service. We have three proclamations: National Small Business Week, Compost Awareness Week, and Arbor Day. The first one is National Small Business Week, April 28th to May 4th, and that'll be read by Alderman Reinards. Alderman Reinards, please.
Thank you. National Small Business Week, whereas America's spirit of innovation thrives, the unwavering dedication of our small businesses who tackle our nation's challenges with fresh ideas and create opportunities for families and workers to flourish. And whereas from the corner store that define our neighborhoods to the cutting-edge startups driving progress, small businesses are the very foundation of our economic strength and the embodiment of the American dream. And whereas supporting these businesses in Davenport fosters job creation and safeguards the unique character of the community. And whereas because over 33 million small businesses across the nation employ over half of all American workers, it is crucial to support our entrepreneurs and foster economic growth. And whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week each year since 1963, highlighting the valuable programs and services offered by the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies to empower entrepreneurs. And whereas Davenport proudly joins the national effort committed to assisting our local small business in the endeavors of expanding their options, operations, creating jobs, and ensuring the continued vibrancy of our community. Therefore, we, Mayor Mattson and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 28th through May 4th, 2024, as National Small Business Week. In Davenport, urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants during National Small Business Week and throughout the year. Dated this 24th day of April, 2024, Mayor Mattson, Mayor of Davenport, Brian Krupp, Deputy City Clerk, is Nate Soboka from Front Street. Yep, I got. Make a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, I guess I can do this. Nate Soboka?
Should I go up to you?
From the front street door.
It looks a little better. You're a handsome man, folks. You're better without the hat. I appreciate it.
You are wearing a disguise. You're a salesman.
Do you want to say something first?
Up to you. Thank you all very much, sir. Much appreciated for everything you guys do.
There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I'll get it right yet. Up to you.
Thank you. Next is Compost Awareness Week, read by Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think we all know what a great compost facility that Davenport has, and so I'm honored to read this in honor of compost council or composting week. So here we go. Whereas the Compost and Council Research and Education Foundation, along with other countries, has declared the first full week of May as the annual International Compost Awareness Week. And whereas recognizing the benefits and values of composting, the City of Davenport demonstrated vision, stewardship, and leadership by constructing and making operational the Davenport Compost Facility in 1995. And whereas leaves, grass, tree trimmings, and wastewater biosolids account for nearly 30% of our community's waste stream. And whereas converting organic waste into a beneficial product known as compost, the city can extend the life of our local landfill and provide access to nutrient-rich, 100% natural soil amendment products to our community. And whereas composting is a way of returning organic resources to the soil, reducing erosion and non-point source water pollution, conserving water, reducing climate impacts by improving sequestration of carbon in soils, and is a proven method of decreasing erosion and dependence on chemical fertilizers. And whereas the City of Davenport celebrates the Davenport Compost Facility, soil conservation stewards, property owners, landscapers, farmers, recyclers, public workers, composters, gardeners, and plant growers everywhere for their efforts to improve local soils and waterways through the use of compost and compost products. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 5th through May 11th, 2024, as Compost Awareness Week in Davenport, and recognize the contributions the city and residents make daily to support a sustainable community, dated this 24th day of April, 2024. I move the proclamation.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So I will have meeting me at the podium, Nicole Gleason, Public Works Director, and the most popular man in Davenport, Robert Bartleson, compost supervisor. Please meet me at the podium.
Congratulations. Thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
One, two, three.
Would you like to say something?
Just thank you very much for this recognition, just for awareness. Compost is at summer hours now, and so all that information is available online. And just props to our and his staff. They do a fantastic job and have great customer service out there. So if you haven't visited them, I would encourage it.
Sure. I guess on behalf of the compost facility and our dedicated staff down there, I just want to thank you guys. Thank the council for their longtime support of the facility. As Marion mentioned, we've been around 30 years. In that time, we've had a lot of progress, a lot of improvements over the years. Been there nearly 20 now, and hopefully with your continued support into the future, we can have 20 more years of progress and improvements at that facility.
Next proclamation is for Arbor Day. That'll be read by Alderman Tim Dunn. Alderman Tim Dunn, please.
City of Davenport, Iowa, proclamation for Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton passed proposal or proposed a special day that would be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion and precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildfire. And whereas trees are renewable resources and give us paper, wood in our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Davenport has observed each Arbor Day for 43 consecutive years by planting trees. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Masson and the City of Davenport, City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do proclaim April 26, 2024, as Arbor Day in Davenport. And we encourage all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further encourage all citizens to plant trees and gladden the heart and promote all well-being of this and future generations, dated this 24th day of April, 2024. Can I have somebody make a motion to move this proclamation?
So moved.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Accepting this will be Nicole Gleason from Public Works Director and Wayne Johnson, arborist for the City of Davenport.
So recently, you're all very familiar with John Vance. He recently retired, and Wayne has graciously stepped into that position. He had spent quite a bit of time as the lead, so I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank him for stepping in and introducing him to you.
Thank you so much, and I look forward to working with everybody here. Thank you.
Thank you all. We have one presentation today, a great program, 2024 Fire Explorers Recognition, and I will meet Lieutenant Solis at the podium for this recognition.
Good evening. For over 20 years, Davenport Fire Department has been involved with educating area youth on career path of firefighting. The Explorer Program provides hands-on education and information for interested youth ages 14 to 20 years old. Tonight, I have the privilege of introducing our 2024 Explorers. These teens come from different backgrounds, schools, and ages, but they share one common goal of learning about the DFD and how we operate. This year's topics have included extinguisher training, CPR skills, and fire hose evolutions. Later this year, we'll be educated on hazardous material and participating in a joint training with the Davenport Police Department on our rescue task force. Mayor, if you would like to help me with recognizing our Explorers, our first-year Explorers are Hannah Griffin, Nicole Norton, and Sam Ross. Our second-year Explorers are Brian Koopman, Gage Musman, and Cooper Shook. Finally, I'd like to recognize our second-year Explorer and our high school intern at the Davenport Fire Department, Chloe Lovelace-Doran.
Thank you for leading this. Okay. Next petitions and communications from all the folks. Anyone? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things tonight. I wanted to welcome back the Trolley Pub to the streets of Davenport. This was an enterprise that came on our streets. The issue was really that Iowa law doesn't, did not really make, these were not legal vehicles for Iowa streets. And there had been a request last summer to put in an ordinance, but we cannot put in an ordinance that violates state law, basically. So that operator closed. We had people come back and say, and there was instruction of this is how you can do this. You have to have a street-registered licensed vehicle, basically. So a couple of people in the city went back, did the work, did the legwork through the fall, got the proper licensing for everything, and came back. And those are approved now, so they're back on our streets. And I want to thank them for their perseverance, working with the city to come up with vehicles that are safe and are licensed, you know, for the streets and are in accordance with state law. So you heard about that this week, and they were back. The other thing I want to say is there's a little progress on the Frank L. Smart, the new school in the West End. There will be a meeting on May 23rd for everyone to come to the school and see the new plans. The process, which starts in planning and zoning for some changes that the school board is requesting of starts in May, but there will be a meeting on May 23rd, and we'll be inviting people across the city. Frank L. Smart is the school for a very large part of the area south of Locust in the city, and so we know there'll be a lot of public interest. Wanted to give a chance for people to see the presentation that council was able to see at their management update meeting and learn a little bit more about the campus that's proposed. So that will be coming up, and we will be announcing that more widely in the coming weeks. So thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you so much. Let me start off with, when you know better, you do better, even though, whatever. So this Thursday will be the Fifth Ward Alderman Meeting at Harvest Time Baptist Church on the corner of Kirkwood and Grand. I don't know the address, but it's all over social media in the city. They'd send it out as well. And also a reminder of May 28th to keep the conversation going, about 3:44. Main Street will be at Third Baptist at 5 o'clock at night. It'll be a nice program that we're trying to put together so we can celebrate a celebration of those folks' lives that were lost, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderwoman Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two communications tonight. The first is just an update. The Code of Conduct Committee is still working on that. A doodle poll went out recently at the request of Alderman Jobjan, and we're looking to have follow-up meetings so that we can get something finalized to present to the council. The second is just to make the public aware that Alderwoman Burkholder and I have been working with our interim administrator and our civil rights director at setting a special council meeting between the council and the commission as a good opportunity for the council to get to know the commission and learn more about the commission so that the council better understands the commission's needs now and in the future. Once the date is set, we'll make sure that the public is made aware. Obviously, that would be an open session meeting, that the public can and would be encouraged to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to make mention that I don't have any new updates regarding the search for the city administrator pending the approval of tonight's professional services contract for the recruitment firm. Once that is approved, then we'll get started on the next steps, and I'll have a new update for you next time. And then I also wanted to put an announcement out for the friends of Martin Luther King who are doing a grand opening celebration for the Martin Luther King Park that is located at 501 Brady Street, and that will be this Sunday, April 28th, at 3:00 p.m. The weather is supposed to be beautiful. Everybody from the public is invited. That is over a decade in the making, and it will be great to cut the ribbon on that and welcome that new park into the City of Davenport. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Anyone else? Alderman Kelly, you have something else?
Yeah, just, I got an email saying that there may be a reschedule for weather, just so you know, for the MLK. So be on the lookout that that may be rescheduled, so.
I agree. So be prepared. Yep. They have a decide, they're going to make the decision, I think, tomorrow. Right? Yep. Good. Thank you for that. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move to the individual approval of items on the discussion agenda. We have one. It is a motion approving a beer and liquor license, annual license, 11th Street Precinct, 2108 East 11th Street, outdoor area, license type C. The fire department recommends denial of the west outdoor service area. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will not remove consideration of the motion.
Motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from all the folks? I see Alderman Jobjan.
Thanks, Mr. Merritt. Just to start off, I will be making a motion to table this with the business owner being out of town. I'll be making a motion to table to the cycle of May 15th and 22nd, but as customary, we'll see if anybody else has some comments before doing so.
I'll second that.
He just let you know, see if anybody else has anything. Okay. Having said that, does anybody else have any other comments before I go back to Alderman Jobjan for the motion? Reinards, do you have a comment?
Can I ask, before we go down?
So he hasn't made the motion yet, so this is discussion. Yep. Okay, so you're gonna, okay. I'll go back to Alderman Jobjan for his motion.
Therefore, I make a motion to table this item to the May 15th and 22nd council cycle.
A second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Burkholder? Okay. Motion and second to table. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll for tabling. Till the cycle. Kelly?
Yeah.
Gripp?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
Ardone? McGinnis?
No.
Reinards?
Yes.
Lynch?
Abstain.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
Jobjan?
Yes.
And Newton?
Yes.
Seven yeses, two noes, and one abstention, Your Honor. Very good. The motion is tabled to the respective date. Okay? Next area is a motion for approval of items on the consent agenda. Move the consent agenda?
Second?
Motion and second. Brian, please call the roll for all items on consent. Burkholder?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn, do you have a, something for, on an item? Okay, I apologize. So, Mr. Krupp, please hold. Do you want to take something off of consent?
I would, please. I'd like to take item number 11, Consent Agenda, to make an amendment motion.
And then you put it back on?
Yep. If memory serves me correct, the city has always had board seat representation associated with economic development, before with Quad City First and then on the Chamber Board. It's my understanding that the Chamber Board removed the public sector representation. Therefore, since we no longer have representation, I move to amend that the payment for the Quad City Chamber be withheld until council has had a work session to understand how things have changed and how our funds will benefit the community. After the work session, the council can make a decision and authorize the expenditures.
Okay, so that's a motion for that individual, number 11.
Correct.
Okay, there's a second. All right. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Gripp?
Just a point of clarification. Are we allowed to take something off the consent agenda and modify it? Brian? Yes?
You say yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Because historically, once it's voted on for consent, it was a majority decision, and it was, in this case, unanimous decision, so you can take it off to discuss but not to change the voting, just to clarify that. Are you saying we're okay?
I'm sorry.
Okay. So historically, we, whenever something's voted on consent, that's the vote. You can take it off to make a discussion, but to change the vote on something that's been put on consent doesn't happen. Are you saying that's okay?
I'm saying we should adhere to prior protocols.
Okay. So then we shouldn't vote. It's on consent. You can make your comment and make your request.
Do you need a motion and a second?
To something that was on consent. So we need to have clarification.
So I just want to be clear that I made this comment last week, and I just thought,
instead of me asking personally that this would be a council decision instead of my decision. So I guess I stand where I stand if it is what it is, so.
So I just need to know if it's okay to continue.
The comment was made last week. The action should have occurred last week, so we're where we should be, and you're correct.
Okay.
There should not be a vote on the amendment.
There's a motion on the floor.
So, and I think I still have the floor because I was asking the question, and really, all I'm doing is clarifying the rules here, which our practice as a council has been that once something is on the consent agenda, you can't take it off of the consent agenda to amend it or to vote on it. It has to stay on the consent agenda. That's all. I am not disagreeing with what Alderman Dunn is saying. I want to have that conversation, but I just want to make sure that we're following our own rules, and so I was asking legal counsel to make sure that we are following our rules. Thank you.
And those rules should be followed unless they're overruled by a majority vote of the council.
Okay. So I'm going to stick with the rule unless someone would like to overrule that.
I would like to know what rules we're referring to because I thought we weren't following any rules.
Okay, so I see Alderman Dunn.
Thank you again. I just want to be clear, previous councils, when one Alderman brought something up, if there was nobody that disagreed or made a comment, that's usually what we did. Direct staff took that as a recommendation. I just want to make sure that's clear that that's a recommendation we're taking. I don't want, I don't want people to think that one Alderman's making this decision. I guess that's my concern.
Okay. Let me know, Alderman McGinnis?
Could I make a friendly request that we have the discussion, but I think the issue is not paying until we've had the meeting. So I think having the discussion, would that, and then that's, I think it's, I think the not paying impacts the budget directly and I think that's the question. Is that, can you clarify any? Ms. Merritt?
Yes, I can clarify. Actually, in light of the comments that were made around this item last week, I was able to meet with the chamber leadership staff yesterday to further discuss this. They are fully aware that we are in a position that we are requesting a formal board seat. I received a correspondence this morning from Mr. Tokar confirming that the city would have a voting board seat on the new economic development entity. So, and the city is actively working on the Economic Development Advisory Council along with our other peer communities in our region to establish what a new service contract would look like and then that would come back to you for formal approval as the council.
Thank you. I see Alderman Jobin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Is the Alderman who made the motion able to rescind that motion?
That can always happen, yes. And the second would have to be rescinded.
In light of that, I guess I will rescind it then.
I will rescind my second.
So that's been taken care of and I still see Alderman Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I mean, we keep talking about rules and I don't know what rules we're talking about because last I was informed there are no council rules. So if there are rules, I would like a copy of such rules so that we're all on the same page because we keep going back and forth between rules or not. And just for clarity, on this particular matter, I would not be taking a position. I would have to abstain because I am a member of the chamber and board, but my objections is to the procedure and the process. So either we have rules or we don't have rules, so. And I want, I want a copy of them if in fact they exist.
Thank you, Alderman Newton. But this issue is mute now because the person who made the motion, the second, have rescinded. So, Brian, please call the roll for consent. Burkholder?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
R. Dunn?
Yes.
Reinhart?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Ann Gripp?
Yes.
Ten yeses, your honor. Very good. Consent's approved. The next area is other ordinances, resolutions, motions. We have one request, but first, we need a motion to suspend the rules to add the vote, to add and vote on the item. Is there a motion to suspend?
Second.
Motion and a second to suspend. Brian, knowing that we need eight to suspend, Brian, please call the roll. Jobin?
Yes.
R. Dunn?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
Kelly?
None.
Lynch?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Reinhart?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Nine yeses and one no, your honor. Very good. The motion, I'm sorry. The rules are suspended, so we have one item, a resolution approving the interim city administrator's employment agreement. Is there any public with comment? And please remember what I said at the beginning. Thank you.
Gary Eklund, I live in Alderman Kelly's ward. I want to speak in opposition to this. I understand that new people on the council want continuity or they want someone in a position to move forward. I think that a whole lot of people in the city of Davenport want some serious changes and we don't want to wait nine months. You know, we, a lot of people blame the city government in large part for the collapse of 324 Main. It was mentioned recently that the former city administrator testified under oath, I think it was, about who her close personal friends in the city were. And my position is anyone named by the former city administrator as being her close personal friends should not be promoted to anything. I think this is a horrendous mistake, even if only going on appearances' sake. Sometimes they say, you know, the appearance of a conflict of interest. I praise an Alderwoman who recently abstained from a vote. Sometimes you should abstain. Sometimes an appearance of a conflict is enough that you shouldn't promote someone. We already have this woman supervising her husband. I wanted to look up how much money a month the two of them were making on the city. I did not have time, but she was, like I say, listed under oath as a close personal friend. And I personally want to know how, I'm not sure when she stopped being the personnel director and moved up, but I would like to know how so many close personal friends of the city administrator became high-up ranking city officials. We're supposed to have a hiring department that is supposed to look for the most qualified individual and I find it unbelievable that the head of the neighborhood department and the assistant administrators and the human resources department, all listed as close personal friends, would all also be the most qualified individual at the same time. I just find it beyond comprehension and beyond belief. My own personal opinion is anyone involved in the ouster of Alderman Cornet should not be promoted. And I may very well agree more on more votes with Alderman Cornet's replacement. This isn't a question of personalities or who's better or who's worse. It's a question of procedurally, you know, what would qualify as actions that would demand that someone be removed immediately? And now, I know when I mentioned the word "sweetie," which was used in this hearing, that there were other things besides just the word "sweetie" being used, but the fact that the word "sweetie" was made a big deal about, I remember, I think it was the human resources director, although maybe it was, I didn't watch the whole thing, but a friend of mine showed me part of it, someone jumped up and said, regarding the use of the word "sweetie," that any Davenport, Iowa city employee who used the word "sweetie" to another Davenport city Iowa employee would be terminated for cause immediately because this isn't I've reported in writing to multiple people racist language by city staff who are still on the payroll, including very high-ranking, very high-paid positions. I don't understand how you can oust an Alderman and they were the ones who mentioned the word "sweetie." I'm not the one who mentioned it. It was very prominent in his ouster. And again, that's not to say that his replacement isn't better. They should have had a fair election to determine who represented that seat. This person was also the personnel director. I've gotten in trouble before when I referred to the public employees' seating section as the white supremacist, the whites-only seating section. It's not. It's employee seating section. But in my opinion, to promote someone who was ever a personnel director in the city of Davenport since 1980 on, if you look over at the employees' seating section, and any individual over there may be the most wonderful person in the entire world, but in a city that is 50% white and 50% everybody else, to have a 100% whites appearing only seating section for the public employees, the highest-paid, most influential people, is outrageous. And no one, no one who has been personnel director in the city of Davenport since 1980 should have another government job the rest of their life, much less be promoted.
Thank you. Next, please.
The former president of the United States is on trial right now in New York for hiding a payoff until after the election. A lot of people think the former president is on trial for the $130,000 payoff. Nope. It's for the cover-up of the payoff until after the election. That is illegal. It's exactly the same thing that we have right here in River City. It's not the payoff of almost $2 million to three former city employees. It's the cover-up until after the election. Mrs. Merritt was intimately involved in covering up the payoffs until after the election. Mrs. Merritt was, and still is, the chief financial officer for the city. If you want to hide a payoff until after the election, you will need the cooperation of Mrs. Merritt. And Mrs. Merritt fully cooperated with hiding the payoffs until after the election. I'm gonna repeat that. Mrs. Merritt fully cooperated with hiding the payoffs until after the election. The state auditor of Iowa is now conducting a re-audit of the city of Davenport. The state auditor is investigating not just these payoffs, but the cover-up until after the election. The state auditor has issued a subpoena to the city council. That's you guys. And the city of Davenport has responded by suing the state auditor to quash the subpoena. The state auditor is investigating Mrs. Merritt and her actions as chief financial And now the city council is once again on the brink of giving Mrs. Merritt a raise. No, no, no. Mrs. Merritt does not deserve a raise. Mrs. Merritt deserves to be fired immediately. You do not reward a city employee who engaged in illegal cover-up. The state auditor will almost certainly make criminal referrals to the state attorney general. Let that sink in. Let that sink in. Quite probably, city employees and elected city officials will face criminal prosecution because of covering up the payoffs until after the election. That is a crime. And you want to give Mrs. Merritt a raise? No, absolutely not. Do the right thing. If nothing else, do it to save your own hides. Do the right thing. No raise for Mrs. Merritt.
Thank you.
I gotta say, this is what I call my Willy Wonka speech. I'm sitting here, I've done this before and before and I keep saying to you guys, "No, stop. Please, stop." And you don't listen. In the words of Ed Tibbetts, you just keep digging a deeper hole. Stop!
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi. Good evening, Rosa Quad Cities. I don't typically like to say slave owners, but since I'm speaking to some here tonight, Thomas Jefferson was said, "The two enemies of the people are criminals and government." So let us tie down the second with the chains of the Constitution so the second will not become the legalized version of the first. What we've seen here, week after week, are criminals in our city. Government taking our taxpayer dollars and using it however you please with no consideration for your constituents. Here we are today discussing another exorbitant payment to someone who was at the table for each and every one of the deals, or should I say arrangements? And you're discussing giving her a salary increase to match the amount paid for the person who departed the position, who'd been in the position for seven, eight years. What job do you have or can you get when you start with the ending salary of your predecessor? Make it make sense. Y'all are up here handing out money like it's growing on trees in the back of City Hall. Is it? If so, tell me which tree to check, Father Marty. I want some. Maybe we can do the streets with it? Maybe we can get these people off the streets? Anything would be better use of the money than this proposal to continue to give her anything. She's not worth it.
Thank you. Next, please.
Judith Lee, Second Ward. I appreciate very much what Dr. Sidran said and I agree. That's what we've been watching for quite a while. As I've said before, the city has had six months to take care of this issue, last October, if not earlier. And you haven't done it then and now you folks here are being forced into a very difficult position. I appreciate that many, most of the new Aldermen have worked hard to create a new binding agreement and stepped away from that MOU. It's not easy to turn this mess around even a little bit. I appreciate that this agreement says that Ms. Merritt cannot apply for the position. That's important. It'll help close an unfortunate chapter. One of my concerns is that this agreement is signed by the mayor and Ms. Merritt. Once again, if you pass this, you are giving the mayor more authority than he has. It should be signed by city council. At a minimum, two-thirds of city council. The mayor has no authority over either one of those positions. So the signature block itself is invalid in this and you should not pass it without further consideration if you pass it at all. I've got questions on the severance, Section 7, on the term, Section 1, and on termination, Section 6B, because they appear to conflict. I don't understand some of the involuntary separation things. And it says in 6B, if council determines she has performed or not performed something so egregious that she would be ousted by two-thirds of a vote, but then it says she can be reinstated as CFO and assistant. If you pass this, this section should also make clear if she is removed by a two-thirds vote of the council, any lump sum payments in Section 7 do not apply. You've got contradictions in this thing that need to be addressed by a decent, knowledgeable, and unbiased attorney, which we are struggling with here as a city. I'm also uncomfortable with the level of familial association between her and her husband as it relates to management of the money in this, in the city. It took almost two pages to explain how to make this work. And yet, it would, I believe, it would be better if he were placed in his original position until she is no longer interim. If indeed she goes back to CFO, then you need conflict of interest agreements still between the two of them because either way, you've got two people who are married to each other managing all the money in this city. And that is a concern to me. So not only am I concerned with what Dr. Sidran said, I'm concerned with the authority to sign this document, I'm concerned with the contents of this document, and I'm concerned that we are trying to rush something through when other entities, as well as some of you, put this city in a bind about this position and about the corporation council decision and is now trying to force you into different ways to fix it without still fixing some of the problems. The mayor doesn't have the authority to sign this, only you do. We've got conflicts regarding termination and we've got conflicts of interest that aren't even addressed. If she goes back to CFO, two people control all the money in this city and they are married to each other. I've got real concerns with this whole thing and I request that you either don't sign it or certainly don't vote on it tonight and go back and fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please.
Diane Salmon, Eighth Ward. We see that the $50,000 bonus issue has been dropped from the agenda. It hasn't really been dropped. Where do the amounts that are supposed to be retroactively paid and the amounts that is supposed to start being paid out in May come from? Who got to choose those amounts? It feels like this is all just a bunch of word games, because if you retro her payback and you add in the $6,273 per month starting May 1st until the new city administrator is hired, she still ends up with well over $50,000. No one else receives that amount of pay, and some people have been working multiple positions for years. It also says under the new agreement, she would be paid $174,420 plus wage increases provided to other department heads and non-bargaining employees. Does this mean we are going to see pay increases and raises for the Civil Rights Director and her management staff? It says it's provided to other departments, so are you going to act like those positions are not as valuable as this one is? You can't pick and choose who you want to give massive amounts of money to and think that's okay. The Mean Girls Club and the Good Old Boys narrative needs to be stopped, and you need to stop spending the taxpayers' money like it's Monopoly money that has no value, because it does. We have people going hungry in this city who are trying to decide whether to buy food, medication, or pay their bills in order to survive, and you're taking their hard-earned money like it's nothing, just to make someone who's not financially struggling even richer. I think several of you have lost touch with reality, and you need to get that back before it's too late. You were elected by your constituents to listen to them, and many of you are not listening. We are calling on all of you to do the right thing and to not give out enormous amounts of money that our city cannot afford at this time. We have a younger generation that is going to be penalized by the decisions you make, or they're going to be flourishing because of the decisions you make. So please make the right decision.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mary Johansson, First Ward. I think that there's a major conflict of interest here with the interim city administrator who is going to receiving more money. She apparently wrote a check for 1.6 million for the previous city administrator, and now she sits in that position, and now she's asking for more money for a representation of the city. I don't know, Chief Financial Officer, what they get paid, but she was an Assistant City Administrator at the same time, so she's qualified to do the city administrator's job. So she's doing two jobs, which nobody can do well. Chief Financial Officer should be doing the job. Paying someone more money to perform the same job doesn't make any sense to me. If she's capable, she's capable, but this is still a conflict of interest. It shouldn't be going on. Another person should have stepped in. It doesn't seem to me that we even need a city administrator, but we do need a Chief Financial Officer. But if it's true that her and her husband control the financial books of this city, that's also a conflict of interest, and it should be illegal. Someone should have lost their job or asked to be released at that point, when both of them are holding that. Either give her the Chief Financial Officer job, or put her husband in the city administrator job. But either way, it looks bad. And I'm not, and I'm, I'm retired old woman. It looks bad for, for this to be going on. Y'all got to be smart enough to say no and wait till this thing is cleared up, because it just isn't getting any better. It, it's just looking worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Chag, Third Ward. We did ask that you do this particular agreement and follow the process. From the sound of it, I cannot be positive, positive that the process was followed correctly once again, in which case I cannot ask you to approve it when you still did not follow the processes that are supposed to be done for this, if in fact, that is what has happened. And I did have issues with the two or three-page conflict of interest specific for one individual when her and her husband have such elevated positions in this city. I can't imagine them not talking about work when they're not at work. And if decisions are being made based on the two of them and the time they spend together and what they think is best, then we are all in such a bad way. I don't know that that's happening, but as someone who was in a high position here, liked to say recently, people are predictable. So that conflict of interest pages was excessively long. That right there should be a red flag, even for the council, when you have to spend that much time writing out potential conflicts of interest of having a husband and wife in such high positions in this city, and what happens in the decisions that are made? And maybe you all should recognize those red flags too? And it isn't easy to replace a person in the situation you are in. I recognize that. But at the same time, is it best to keep moving forward just because it is perceived to be easier than doing the right thing? I wish to God the easy thing and the right thing was always the same thing, but quite often it is not. The city as a council needs to focus on, for a change, doing the right thing for the people, not for individuals, for the majority. That might be a new concept for some of you. The majority. If only four or five people get up here and talk, it doesn't mean that 50 didn't want to get up and talk, but only five are able to stand up here in front of you and talk. And if only five of us or 50 of us come in, there's 100, 200, 500, more than that at home that agree with us. You can wait to the next election to find out Ezra's right, or you can decide that. It's time to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Paul Vasquez, Third Ward, City of Davenport. First off, I want to explain, I agree with absolutely everything everybody said, but I want to elaborate on something I said earlier, because I think it proves a point. So bear with me just a second. When I was involved with the lawsuit with the city, all right, I was told, I was told that my work had no value. I was told that I had no merit. I was told I did what I did because I was simply, it was a hobby, I had nothing else to do, is what I was told. So take any of you people or anybody here, you know, and, and tell them that, all right? I was told I had no value because I did not make any money, I didn't sell a product. Now, to me, that, that is a gross failure of, of my rights and understanding that I'm part of this city, okay? It goes to what I think is a major mindset problem in the city. I think that needs to be changed. Everybody's right. You know, if, if the right thing was done instead of the financially correct things, we're not a business. What we do is not all based on profit and loss, and should not be looked at that way. And if decisions had been made, that was 12, 13, 14 years ago, if decisions would have been made on doing the right things, doing what should have been done, doing something with everybody in mind, you wouldn't have the problems you have. A lot of them would be gone, or at least easier to remedy. I completely agree with everything being said here. It's a core problem. It needs to change. It needs to change with those people, it needs to change with you people. You have to listen to everybody. You really do. It's tough. I've said this earlier, you've got a tough job, but you've got to listen to everybody, and not everything we do is based on dollars and cents. It's got to be based on right and wrong.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Well, an alderman, please move the resolution. Motion is second. Any discussion from alderfolks? See, okay. Is there? Alderwoman Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. A few comments, because I do want to address some of the things said by the public, because it is, it is important. First of all, the, the council as a whole discussed what would be the right thing to do. If she is performing a job that pays a certain amount, she should get paid for that amount during that period of time. I was against a bonus. There were several on council against a bonus. But she did perform a job from November to this date and will be continuing to perform a job. No one's going to take a job and, you know, start, if a manager at your work quits and then you have to do that job, you're going to be expected to pay what that position pays. Now, I've had a lot of questions and comments in the last speakers, so I wanted to address some of those, so that there's clarity. One thing that kept coming up is that we pay, the city of Davenport pays too much for an administrator. That is not exactly true when you look at what other cities are paying, other cities in the state of Iowa, and compare the cities by the population of that city. Davenport's kind of in the median. I think part of the perception and where that comes from is that when Davenport reports the wages, they include the entire benefit package, so insurance and all those other benefits, which inflates that number. But if we were going to compare apples to apples, we would be looking at her actual salar, or the salary of an administrator and comparing that salary to the salary of an administrator in other cities, such as Cedar Rapids, Des Moines, Iowa City. And then you would see that it's, it's not true that Davenport is too high. It's actually kind of in the median. I've heard about wanting to protect tax dollars, and we don't have money growing on trees. Unfortunately, if we did, I'd let you know where they're at, but that doesn't, it doesn't work that way. And I think the council is trying to be fiscally responsible. We have to have an administrator in the position filling the role. That is absolutely important. And it is the fiscally responsible thing to do, to continue allowing our current interim to serve in that capacity until we find a permanent one. Now, I completely agree with the public, and I've made that clear on more than one occasion. We need a fresh pair of eyes. I mean, we really do need someone from the outside to move our city forward. Anyone who's paid in any bit of close attention knows that we have issues in Davenport, and we're trying to work through those issues. And I, as I've said to the public on multiple occasions, we have to work together. I mean, it's not perfect, it's not going to happen overnight, and we're trying to, every baby steps, we're trying to, as a council, we did listen. The council listened to the public saying, hey, this should have been something discussed by the entire council. And that is exactly what we did, in trying to arrive at a, an agreement that will get us to, hopefully, September 1, having a permanent administrator for the city of Davenport. In terms of the conflict of interest, I agree. That's an issue. I think she recognizes the same, which is why she's not applying for the position. And she has made that clear, and that's actually in writing, so it's crystal clear to the public, and that's why that's a public document. The council did take steps to ensure we address the conflict as much as possible, which is why there's a couple pages worth of provisions meant to protect against any possible or apparent conflict, so that that's taken care of. And then one last thing that I wanted to address that I also heard in terms of director pay, or whether someone's paid or not paid. At the end of the day, when I look at things, I think it's, two wrongs will never make a right. I'm looking at this, I'm trying to do the best that I can for the city. I think that the council is trying to do the same thing with the information, with what we have in this moment. And that doesn't mean that we're not going to look at other issues that have come before the council. I can tell you that there's a lot of work that's done between every, between every Wednesday, you know, from Wednesday to Wednesday, there's meetings that are taking place, there's conversations that are taking place, and essentially, we're trying to do what's right for the people and work with the people. So, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton. Anyone else? Very good. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll for this resolution.
Gripp?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Burkholder?
No.
Teedun?
Yes.
Reinartz?
Yes.
Ardun?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Eight yeses and two noes. Your Honor?
Very good. The resolution passes. Okay. Any other reports? No. Okay. Well, an alderman, move to go in executive session to review or discuss records which are required or authorized by state or federal law to be kept confidential, to be kept confidential as a condition for that governmental body, governmental body's possession or continued receipt of federal funds pursuant to Iowa Code 21.5. Before, I ask for the motion is second, and then roll call, just to let everybody know that we will adjourn the meeting from the, after the executive session, and we will not come back here. Is there a motion and second?
Still move.
Okay. Brian, please call the roll to go in executive session.
Newton?
Yes.
Reinartz?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Kelly?
Gripp? Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Teedun?
Yes.
Ardun?
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. We'll go to executive session. We'll adjourn from up there.